Welcome, everybody. Is this working?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Jean Roberts. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters in Appleton. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the League of Women Voters, the League of Women Voters in Appleton is a nonpartisan organization, meaning that we do not support or oppose candidates for public office, but we act only on those issues chosen by our membership for study and action. The League believes that participation of informed citizens is beneficial to the political system. We encourage our members as individuals to be active in finding and supporting candidates for public office and in seeking election to public office. Within the next year, the League of Women Voters will begin celebrating our 100th anniversary along with the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment, granting voting rights in national elections to all women. Since Wisconsin was the first state to vote on this, the celebration will begin at the state level in June of 2019. We will also continue with our voter registration assistance and other programs throughout the year. Anyone who is interested in finding out more about the League of Women Voters can look at our website, lwpappleton.org, like us on Facebook, or talk with any of our members. We would like to thank our candidates for entering the school board race and being willing to give them their time and energy to run for office and serve their community and school district. For this, we citizens are grateful. At the April election, you will vote for two of these three candidates: Tim McKay, Deb Truman, or James Bowman. The Fox Cities Advocates for Public Education are joining the League in providing this forum. Similar to the League, the Fox Cities Advocate is nonpartisan and does not support or oppose parties or candidates for office. For full disclosure, candidate Jim Bowman is a member of both the Appleton League for Women Voters and Fox Cities Advocates for Public Education. He has not been given any advance knowledge of any questions or format for this forum. And finally, thank you for your interest in this forum and your support of the voting process. Tonight, we hope to have at least some of our questions answered. The League of Women Voters has a couple of questions, and we invite you, the audience, to write any questions you have on the note cards and ask them to an attendant. We have two attendants tonight, one for each aisle, and if you want to stand up and raise your hand. Anybody who thinks of a question at any time throughout this process, raise your hands and they'll bring you a card. In addition, there are League members who will review the questions. This is not to eliminate any question, but rather to group them into light categories so that we do not repeat ourselves and we have the opportunity to ask as many questions and cover a variety of issues. We have a timekeeper, Julie Evers. And Julie's right out here. The League has always found this process to be a good means to keep us on track and moving along. It is not meant to cut people off or diminish the importance of response, but simply to use our time wisely. Jacqueline Klimishevsky is Director of Border Services for the League of Women Voters in Appleton. Jacqueline has planned and organized this forum with League members, and she will be presenting the questions to the candidates. Thank you, Jean. Can everyone hear me all right? Do I need to get closer? Okay. So, let me add my gratitude to the candidates for your time this evening, to share your viewpoints with our voters, and thanks to the audience for caring enough to be informed when you cast your votes on April 2nd. I have some prepared questions ahead of time, and some of our members have sent us some questions ahead of time, but we are going to do something just a little bit different from our norm. One of the goals of the League is to promote civic education. We're all about getting people interested in voting, and to that end, especially young people who are new to the electoral process. So what we have done is we've asked East, West, and North to have a student represent their site and ask a question. So I will be introducing them at a key point in here. They will come up and ask the question for you. They ask very different questions, so it's kind of refreshing to have their perspective. So, for each question, all the questions that are submitted, asked and unasked, will be going in electronic format to the candidates early this weekend, and I'll give them a certain amount of time to put written answers down for those questions, and then we turn it into a voter guide. So if we have all three candidates and the question, and side by side by side, we will have their responses to those questions. That will be on our website, as well as the videotape of this forum. So if you have friends, neighbors that weren't able to be here tonight, there's a lot of friends and neighbors that are not here tonight, let them know where they can find some information so they can be an informed voter as well. Okay, so for each question, a candidate will have a minute and a half to respond. I might change that up if there becomes an elaborate question or a two-part question that might give you a whole two minutes to respond. So, before we get to the questions, let's have the candidates introduce themselves, their background, and their interest in the school board seat going through. And the order that I have them up here is the order that they're on the ballot. So I will be, with every round, changing up who goes first, second, and third. Should I call you by your first name? Tim.
Hi, my name is Tim McKay. I've been an Appleton resident for 24 years.
Yes.
I grew up in Oshkosh. Both my parents were public school teachers. I've been married for 35 years. I have two married daughters, both going through the Appleton public school system. Highlands Elementary School, Wilson Middle School, and West High School, then off to UW-Madison. My oldest daughter is now a teacher, public school teacher in the Sun Prairie School District, and my youngest daughter is an attorney, Brisbane, Australia. I've been a commercial lending officer for 35 years. I'm a businessman, I'm very pro-public education, and I want to bring that business perspective to the Board for just diversity of ideas on the Board. That's it.
Is the green light on? Okay. Thanks. My name is Deb Truman, and I've been an Appleton resident for 26 years, married my husband, Rick, who's in the audience, thank him for that. And we have four grown children. Luckily enough, they have nine grandchildren, and five of them attend the Appleton area public school district, and that is part of my interest, why I'm interested in being on the Board. I'm also an educator. I retired just last May. I've had 21 years as an experience as an educator in the public school system, ranging from classroom teacher, reading specialist, literacy coordinator, and been in a couple different districts, which give me a perspective from a couple different districts of how education has been or could be. I believe that a strong pre-K-12 public education is important for students. I've seen by attending the meetings that there is a lot, so many good things going on, and I want to just be able to help continue that by bringing my experience and ideas to the Board.
For the timekeeper, what you're showing us is time remaining, not time elapsed. I'm Jim Bowman. Different kids learn differently. My son and daughter both went through the Appleton School, and Appleton Schools have got a very good education, but the results were very different. For my daughter, everything seemed to go right. Good grades, lots of friends, good athlete. She's the kind of kid that makes a parent think, "You know what you're doing." Everything in Thai works. My son was quite different. From sixth grade on, he started to lose friends because the other kids were growing up more quickly than was he. Pretty soon, he was eating lunch alone in the school cafeteria. I told the school board six years ago, and in the back of my mind was to discover what we can do so that every child succeeds. I met with administrators and teachers at every school, including charters, and asked them how they engage and challenge kids. I met with PTAs and community groups to determine what their role in learning was, and I concluded there are four stakeholders that need to come together. That's the student, family, teacher, and the community. And I believe that with those four collaborate, that the student almost certainly will succeed academically, socially, and emotionally. And as the evening wears on, I'd like to share more of my thinking with you.
Okay. For our next round, we'll start with Deb, and then go to Jim, and then Tim. So, it's what do you see as your, the role of the school board? What do you think is expected of you as a board member? Why are school boards necessary, and what are the leadership responsibilities involved by being a member of the school board?
That's a two-minute answer, right? Okay. It's a long question. Well, my understanding is that the school board is responsible for setting policies for the district. What I would bring to that is, like I said, mentioned, my experience not only in education as an educator, but also being in different districts, my experience in working with my own kids and also my grandchildren. I feel that I can present my ideas in a way that is not offensive to anyone. I love listening and I love learning, so I think that would be a good asset to bring to the Board. Responsibilities would include, and this is me, I'm a very hard worker, so I'm going to set the goal for myself to attend as many of the meetings and as many of the school functions as I possibly can. I was even thinking it'd be nice to have an AASD school board member name tag as I go to the public events so that people know that we are being represented by the school board. And then that would also be a way to have people feel free to come up and just give a comment or something. I would take it seriously and the fact that I realize this is a very well-respected school district, very well-respected Board of Education, and I would work my best to make sure that I can be an important part of that. Thank you.
We've got 16,000 kids in this district. The role of the school board is to make sure every one of them graduates prepared for the future. To do that, we set policies, and then we pass those policies on the leadership team, that's the superintendent for the people reporting to her. It's their job to carry them out. Then we get progress reports on how things are going. To do, for everybody to graduate prepared for the future, we need facilities that are good repair and up-to-date. We need talented educators. We need a curriculum that's current and relevant. We need a set of, a level of thinking within the student body that encourages every student to support every other student. So I just want to focus on that last one, because one of the initiatives in the school district is to improve what I'll call supportive learning environment. That environment that makes every kid want to do their best. And that comes when you've got an educator that inspires you. It comes when the kid sitting behind you doesn't tease you, the kid sitting to the right of you with your friend, and when you've got a problem, you can share that problem with your friend and get support. So, that's the job of the school, to oversee the implementation of those policies and make sure we're getting results.
Yeah, what a school board does is oversight, big-term, large-picture things, we're not the administrators. We have, are fortunate, Appleton has a fantastic superintendent and team surrounding her of administrators. It makes our job a lot easier. We do bring problems to us, and our job then is to look at the problems, sorry, look at the problems and then make sure that we are getting all stakeholders involved, looking at outcomes that really impact everybody favorably and non-judgmentally, and keep the kids in mind. Our goal is always, everything that we do is to make sure that we prepare each student for the future.
Okay, for this next question, we'll start with Jim, go to Deb, and then we'll finish up with Tim again. AASD mission is preparing our students for their future, every child, every day. What is one thing you think AASD does well, and what is one thing you think AASD should improve?
I think we have a good cadre of educators. I'm going to talk about educators on both what we do well and what we need to improve on. We do have a cadre of dedicated, interested, passionate people that care about children. We have an experienced workforce. They've been teaching a while, they are well-prepared, they've gotten certified. Based on my contacts with them, I am quite pleased with what I see. But on the other side, we have changing student body. We have more of a multicultural group than we've had in the past. So our educators are primarily class-wide, and the examples that they use in teaching and the methods that they use in presenting information tends to reflect their cultural background, as it would for you and I if we were teaching. But lots of our kids don't come from that background. We've got a lot of children of color, about 5% African-American, about 5% non, about 20% Hispanic, and we've got more and more low-income children that come from a very different type of background. So in order to be effective with kids that are struggling, you have to teach to their culture. That's a huge challenge for educators, but that's an area that we're working on and which we do need to get better.
I would agree with Jim that there is a great wealth of talent in the teaching and pure professional staff in the Appleton area school district. When I was here about 10 years ago teaching, I met a lot of those people, and a lot of those teachers are still here today. I've talked with them, kept in touch with them, and know that, and just in going to the board meetings, I know that there are a lot of great programs going for the students above average academics, as well as those a little below average academics. And so I think that's the good side, though. We've got a lot of good, strong base. Things that I see to improve, and this alludes a little bit to what Jim said, students are changing. Low socioeconomic is more, is a higher rate of the students. We have a lot more diversity in the student population. There's things called trauma-informed care, I think, and I think it's being started a little bit, but how, when these students aren't performing in school, what's the reason? Is it because they don't want to, or is it because they have other things on their mind? So what I would like to see is have us look a little bit more into the trauma-informed care, culturally responsive practices, and make sure our children are mentally healthy. That's it.
Yeah, I'm really proud of one thing that we have done, and in spite of the funding, the lack of funding at the state level, and I'm going to talk finance, because I am a banker, but we have the highest credit rating that you can have. We have cut down the mill rate that the taxpayer pays on their real estate taxes. We've done this with funding that has not been steady. So I'm really proud of that, and the thing that we probably need to work on, and we've really focused on this as a Board, is that achievement gap. And that achievement gap is a hard one to really lasso, because you've got, it's caused by some sources that are really vague. One of them is poverty. With poverty goes, there's family, families' ties aren't as strong as other families'. So, to attack that, early, I'm sorry, let me try to find the second. Early, yeah, early educational interventions and things like that are a way to go.
Okay, for the next question, we'll start with Tim, go to Jim, and then Deb. And I was going to start with East, but you're moderator, you changed the rules. And I'm going to go, start with West High School. Jacob Royster is representing the townsmen, and I made that change because the questions that, your responses leave right into his question, so I'm going to take that opportunity. And I want to thank Nina and Osman for recommending Jacob.
At Appleton West High School, there's perceived statistical decline in the stability of our curriculums. Conversion attempts to digitize the lesson plans, the changing of grading scales, so that forward of work holds no weight to semester grades. Several individuals I've spoken about on campus are wary about the future of our school system as a whole, even more so since ACT scores for Appleton West have declined by 5% in previous year. What are your beliefs on the reality or causes of Appleton West's perceived decline in educational accountability, and what action would you take to bring peace and balance to the community, as well as maintaining a level of foundation of learning for students of all kinds?
Yeah, that's a good question, and both of my daughters went through Appleton West High School. They did very well. They did very high on their ACTs. They went off to UW-Madison, and they have very successful careers. It hasn't been that long ago. If you look at the high schools in Appleton, and you compare the public schools with private schools, and you compare populations to apples to apples, our public schools are knocking the cover off the ball, we're outperforming the private schools. Now, the challenge becomes in funding, continued funding, and as Jim mentioned, diversity and changing of the student body, and that's something we have to work on with the achievement gap, getting early education in place, and making sure that we get every kid up to speed and to achieve their maximum potential.
I'm next.
Yes, you are.
I'm Jacob, right? Yeah. I'd like to see more of the, the decline is a concern, but I'd like to know if it's a long-term decline or if it's a blip in a year or two. I'd like to know where the decline is occurring. Is this student body-wide? Like, is the student body pretty much scoring less than the kids used to, or is it at certain levels, or is this a distribution, a spread between the best and the struggling? So I need to, I need to dig into the numbers, because by doing that, I could get a better fix on the problem we're facing. If your demographics are changing, that might be a factor. If the number of the types of courses being offered has changed, that could be a factor too. So, before I could look to any particular project, I just have to see more data and do some analysis of it.
I tend to agree with Jim. I do think that data, unless it's a long-term trend, can be misleading. Oftentimes, numbers show you what you want them to show you. So it would take some studying that, but in addition to that, and along with demographics, the students that are there, if they're not performing well, I think it's important to dig down into why. And again, we come back, is it mental health issues? Is it trouble at home that they just can't concentrate? The change in curriculum could be another reason for the decline. So this isn't an easily answered question. I think it's just important to take a look at what we have, but then step back and try to ask, why do we have what we have? And work from the bottom up to fix it.
So for question five, we're going to start with Jim, go to Tim, and then Deb will finish up on that question. And we will bring Erin Ritzinger from East High School, the career staff. And I have to thank Jane Gruff for finding her again.
With all the snow days this year, a decision was made to make it up by adding time to the school days, specifically 20 minutes to each day for all high schools. At my high school, East, this resulted in making the first and last period five minutes longer, with an additional 10 minutes added to our homeroom period. This solution has caused controversy, and I myself, being an AP student and meeting every minute of my advanced classes, am of the opinion that this solution was not leading the spirit of learning, but rather the mindset of getting the minutes in. Although, on the other hand, this solution did not add additional days to the school calendar, which also has benefits. Given Wisconsin's turbulent winters and the prospect of this happening again in the future, what decision would you make in your position to make sure the requirements of the state are met while maintaining the spirit of education and upholding the learning environment necessary for students to be successful?
As you may know, the state gives us a requirement of so many minutes, I think it is. So we have to offer, and that's their way, that's kind of a quality control thing with the state, to make sure that all these 422 districts are putting in enough study and learning time. So, we've lost a bunch of days this year, and in the case of East, we've got to make it up. But one way to do it is add more days on into, to Jim. Another way to do it is extend each day between now and then, and that's what's an issue that parents are raising. I'd like to see all possible options in front of me, and then I would pick the one that is best fits into the schedule of students, parents, and teachers. One might be problematic for the kids, but convenient for parents, so I would need to see the options in front of me. I'd like to see a new option considered, and that is the, I'll call it the Chromebook option, the option in which kids learn at home. While the snow's piling up outside, and they were initially thrilled with the day off, now their teacher is in contact with them electronically, and they're getting assignments that way. Nina is pilot testing it, and I'd like to see how that goes.
Yeah, I agree with Jim. We're kind of hamstrung on the number of minutes, I guess, that they measure that by. We have to go with state handing, I think. So the options would be to look at as many as you can, and I'm not sure that there is a whole lot of those if you don't want to extend these four here. So Nina, I thought, came up with a very good solution, and I would, I'd like to look at that with you, is the Chromebook or the video conference or something.
This is a time when being third is to an advantage, because I hate to repeat exactly what they said, but I was thinking of that right away. I had read how Nina was using Chromebooks, and students were just, they could sit and work in their pajamas, which they thought was great, and they were keeping up with their lessons and didn't have to make the extra time. You mentioned this at the high school. I know at elementary, they're adding minutes too, but their classrooms are more autonomous, so it doesn't matter so much for them. But at the high school, to add 10 minutes to your homeroom period and five to the first and last class of the day, I think if I were taking AP courses, I would feel a little bit cheated as well. So, like the other two, what would be some other options? It's not easy. You've got bell schedules, you've got athletics, you've got, you have so many different factors. But what really...
And for this question, we, I'll ask Sarah Fleming from North High School to come up here, from the, please look at the paper. And I have to thank Erin Rupponi for reviewing her report with us. Sarah?
Good evening. In recent years, school shootings across the nation have been on the rise. According to the Center for Homeland Defense and Security, in 2018, there were 97 school shootings, whereas in 2010, there were only 15. Though we are only three months into the school year, or excuse me, three months into the year, the nation has already seen 17 shootings throughout the nation. In Appleton area school district, some safety measures have been put in place, such as adopting and practicing the Alice Active Shooter Response Program. Appleton North recently added more security cameras and limited entry points into the building, including locking exterior doors requiring an ID check during school hours before entering the commons doors. North has also increased awareness programs about mental health and the well-being of students, and is focusing on helping students feel more connected and valued. Still, of all the school shootings since 1970, 700 out of 1,211, over half, were carried out by current students of that school. Given this, how would you continue to ensure safety in schools, as well as continue to focus on mental health?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good question. Appleton was very lucky that within our referendum, there were people, well, first, to put basically a police officer in the high schools. There's one in each high school, there's one each middle school, and at the elementary level, there's part-time phase-off officers. You mentioned some of the other things that, that Appleton has done. We've got cameras, shatterproof glass, security entryways, which were, we put some in and we installed others. There's some photo money available for that. And this Alice training that you mentioned for intruders. Other than that, you know, we're not looking at other options like arming the teachers. I, I heard that was brought up in, in national media that it would not start for Appleton. We're not supporting that.
Okay. Um, I, I'm, again, because I was an educator in different districts, including Appleton, I, I know that there are security measures in place in the schools. I've been through the Alice training, and it's pretty scary when you hear somebody coming in and pop, 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 and you're hiding in a closet hoping that he'll find you. And I think I got killed once, as a matter of fact. But I think a lot of it comes back down to relationships with students, mental health screening, help for the students that need it, just getting to know the students so that we can be a little more aware of if someone is feeling particularly troubled. A, a lot of the measures are in place. I don't see teachers walking around with handguns either. But I just really think if we can start to figure out why, can we, is there some way to notice the students ahead of time and just do our best to keep our schools safe and secure?
Carol, right? Tim mentioned facilities work. We've spent a chunk of money moving offices around so they're closer to the front door where they can observe all people coming in. We put shatterproof gla, glass in a lot of doors. Tim mentioned Alice. You mentioned the school resource officers and cameras. Deb talked about emotional health. I know all absolute valid things to say. I'll add two others. And nobody's mentioned the gun-free zone. We do have gun-free zones throughout the school and the school grounds, and I think that's part of the answer, and I would maintain that. I want to add the voice of the student, which is what Carol has added today. And I think we need that. The Parkland, Florida, when, when that was that, that very scary disaster a year or two ago, the media coverage tends to focus on the kids. And the kids are organized, and they're making their voice known. And, and they get camera attention when sometimes school board members do not. So I just want to endorse your raising that issue, and I want to endorse student groups at our three high schools to present their point of view, because the community will listen to you.
What do you think? Do you think you would? Okay. Now, for our next question. Question seven, we're going to start with Deb, go to Jim, and then to Tim. So what are your views of truancy court, or how should we be dealing with truancy?
Okay, I've been attending the board meetings since December, just to prepare for running for office, and that happened to be a lot of when the truancy discussion was going on. I think there's a lot of people that have a lot of ideas. I don't know that a lot of people have the same ideas of what's all going on. But what I understand is that if a student age 17 or over is issued a citation, that it appears on their C-CAP record, and they're branded for life, I guess, with, with, with an offense, I wonder what it took to get to that point. I'm glad that the truancy court, as it has been, is set aside for now. I'm glad that there's a task force with community members and a lot of professional community members on it to come up with some new plan. Eventually, it will need to be approved by the court. But I just, again, wonder, is, is the process transparent enough so that all students and families know exactly what it would take before the students were issued that citation? And I'm looking forward to it becoming a better policy.
We should never forget that the goal objective is graduation, prepared for the future. With about 16,000 kids, I'd like to see every one of them graduate on time with high academics, social, and emotional health. To do that, they have to be in class. Truancy is an issue in our district. With 16,000 kids, we have about 525 that are classified on average. It's habitually true on each year. And about 100 of those made their way to what we used to call the truancy court. Based on all of the conversations that have taken place, and the Prairie Report studied this issue, I think there are two effects going on, and we need to, need to recognize both of them. One is that for many of the kids that went to truancy court, they were verbally abused and ridiculed by the primary judge. It was long, and it was terrible, and it was a very bad emotional experience for them. But there's another effect, and that is the truancy court that started in 2009 has reduced truancy in the district by over 20%. That means more kids going back to class. So there's two effects. And we now are, have a task force that will chart a new course of action for us, and I'm hoping that they will take action that recognizes both. On the one hand, we need to give emotional support to the kids that are troubled, that are in that level of truancy. But on the other hand, we probably need a deterrent to discourage people from just skipping here and there.
I agree with you, Deb, that this is not always great to be third, because it's that, basically, Jim just said it all. But I would like to say that I'm proud of how the board handled the issue. When the issue became public, we decided that there was an issue to look at. We did the right things. We did professionally. We went out and got an independent source to investigate it. We didn't jump to pre, any preconceived conclusions or anything. We looked at all the facts. We brought the facts in, and then we set up an independent, independent task force to look at that and get, and bring back recommendations to us. So we can look at both sides of those issues that Jim mentioned. The truancy court, that there were some benefits to it, and there were some negatives. We need to put those two together and make the best system for the kids. And just like any business system, we set up monitoring systems, and you look at metrics on that, and you see if things are going well, so we don't divert back into the problems that we had to begin with.
Okay, so we'll start with Jim this time, and go to Tim, and then to Deb. The Wisconsin Parental Choice Program has cost Fox City's public schools over 13.3 million from 2013 to 2018, the last six years. How has this diversion of funding impacted public schools in Appleton?
There's two effects. One is the question, which is funding, but I must also, I'll talk about results. Currently, there are 273 vouchers that have been issued in my district, the Appleton area school district, for the current year. The cost of those is 1.8 million, and every penny of that has been assigned to our company taxpayers. So the owner, that's for this year only, the owner of a $200,000 home is paying a voucher tax of $46 this year. Now, let's talk about the results. Of those 273 vouchers that are issued, statewide estimates suggest that about 28% of those kids transferred from a public school. Just 28% transferred. The others were already enrolled in some way in the private school. Broad, rigorous, large-scale studies in Ohio, Louisiana, Indiana, Milwaukee, and New York City have concluded in recent years that kids on voucher schools do not learn any more than they would have learned had they stayed in the public schools. So we are paying 1.8 million dollars and not getting a result. Let me add that we have excellent parochial schools in this area, both Xavier System and Fox Valley, who are excellent. I just don't think we should be subsidized.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jim on that. The research doesn't show that there was any improvement, and a large percentage of the kids are already within the private school system. 1.8 million dollars in increasing yearly is a big chunk of money for the taxpayers to, to eat. So I, I, and then, and then we, and then the private part, because they're private and not public, they don't have to follow the same rules as the public schools. So there could be federal regulations that they don't have to follow. So there can be discrimination at the private school levels. So there's a lot of things involved in that. But the biggest one as a taxpayer is 1.8 million dollars is a lot of money to, to go into private, largely religious schools.
Okay, Jackie, could I just ask, could you repeat the question? I want to make sure I stay on track.
The Wisconsin Parental Choice Program has cost Fox City's public schools over 13.3 million from 2013 to 2018. How has this diversion of funding impacted public schools in Appleton?
Okay, and, and I, I do believe it has impacted public schools in Appleton. I, to a, to a large extent. As Tim mentioned, the private schools don't have to take all of the special needs students, and they're in the public schools. This is a huge cost to the district, because we want to provide them with as creative education as, as possible, just like anyone else. And so I, I was at Dr. Mies' presentation a few weeks ago and realized that in this way, in this way, the diversion of funds is discriminatory to those students with special needs or a lot of other students that don't have, because of private schools don't have to take them in because of their rules and regulations. And I, I think this has well affected public education to the tune of 1.8 million per year.
Okay, question nine, we'll start with Deb, go to Tim, and then to Jim. So as a school board member, you'll be asked to make many important school finance decisions. Provide us with some general thoughts on your approach to school budgets, experience you've had with large budgets, and at what point do you think that you would advocate for an operating referendum to avoid cuts in services or programs?
I have to admit that this would be new to me. I, I haven't worked on the school board before. I, I've been an educator. I understand that it's important to work within limits. I believe that the, the chief financial officer in Appleton is doing a wonderful job. He's very clear with his expectations. I was at a presentation he made the other day, and it sounds like the district is in great financial shape. Now, that doesn't mean it will always be there. I think if we're very clear with the public as to why we may need more money in an operational budget, I would be fine with advocating for that, just because I really feel that the resources we have in place now, personal as well as monetary, are very well, are being looked at very carefully and well managed.
Okay.
Yeah, I, well, I agree with you. We do have a great financial person, and we had a previous financial person who's very strong also. So we're, we're very lucky that way. I think that when I first got on the board, one of the questions I asked was, how in the heck can you budget? You don't, you don't have, you don't know when your revenue is coming until halfway into the first semester of the school year. How do you do that? As a private business person, that blew me away. So one of the things that, that I would say that we need to do is get a predictable funding, sustainable funding source. And that's what we're looking at right now with Blue Ribbon Commission findings. As a board, we're looking into that and basically coming back with recommendations that they should implement. That would be one of them. The other one would be the unfunded mandate, the, the special education funding. We're funding, that's about $30 million budget, of which we're getting reimbursed 24.6%. So the rest comes out of the general budget and hurts the rest of the students that's impacting that. So that needs to be fixed, and we're, we're looking, we're asking Blue Ribbon Commission to do that. We're looking at our legislators and talking about that. So those are two big main items on that that would really help us, but it's the funding. The last one would be the mental health, and we're looking at some money per pupil on that to fund some of those programs.
Let me comment on a couple of issues that have come up that we're addressing right now. Our, our, we're the sixth largest district in the state. Our operating budget is about $212 million this year, so it's, it's a lot of money. Incidentally, probably 70% of that comes from government at some level, mostly the state, and probably around 30% from private taxpayers. So those are a couple of numbers. How to allocate that 212 million, that's our challenge, you know? How much do you spend on A, B, and C? Educators, how much on benefits? How much on curriculum? How much on facilities? One innovative tool that we are pilot testing is called weighted student funding. That means that we look at the needs of each individual school. We have 22 neighborhood schools and 14 charities. We look at the needs of each one, and if one has a greater need for counselors, then we use a weighted student, weighted funding model that enables us to push more money to that school for that need, and less to some other school that doesn't have that in particular. So this is an area of flexibility that our superintendent and our business manager put together that I think shows promise.
Okay, question 10. Jim, and then Deb, and then Tim. So without repeating what I already mentioned, what recommendation coming out of the Blue Ribbon Commission would benefit the Appleton area school district?
I think special ed funding is going to be at the top of every school district's list. We get, we are largely mandated on most of the
mostly the state, and probably around thirty percent is from private taxpayers. So those are rough numbers. How to allocate that two hundred and twelve million? That's our challenge. How much do you spend on A, B, and C? Educators, how much on benefits, how much on curriculum, how much on facilities? One innovative tool that we are pilot testing is called weighted student funding. That means that we look at the needs of each individual school. We have twenty-two neighborhood schools and thirteen chargers. We look at the needs of each one and if one has a greater need for counselors, then we use a weighted student, weighted funding model that enables us to push more money to that school for that need unless it's to some other school that doesn't have that particular need. So, this is an area of flexibility that our superintendent and our business manager put together that I think should be honest.
Okay, question ten. Jim and then Deb and then Tim. So, without repeating what I already mentioned, what recommendation coming out of the Blue Ribbon Commission would benefit the Appleton area school district?
I think special ed funding is going to be at the top of every school district's list. We get, we are largely mandated on most of the special ed services we have to provide. That, most of that comes from the feds, federal government. So, we have to do it, but we get reimbursed for only about twenty-five percent currently from the state. So we have a huge charge each year that we have to make up some way and the state is not giving us the money. So what we currently do, and most districts do the exact same thing, we transfer money out of what's called the general fund, which is general education. That's the money that's used for educators, for curriculum, and for courses. It's the money that enables you to offer more for a foreign language, for example, or to pull down the class sizes in the upper interest. We're taking money out of there and putting it in for special ed because we absolutely have to. The amount this year is twenty-four million, so it's a lot of money. So if we, Governor Abrams is recommending that special ed reimbursement rate be increased to thirty percent in year one of the biennial budget and sixty percent in year two. If that were accomplished, we would be able to restore much of the funding to what we call Fund Ten or General Purpose Education, which is where it's supposed to be.
Okay, I have to, again, being new to this process, I have to admit I'm not a whole lot familiar with the Blue Ribbon Commission, what the results are on that. But if it has to do with special ed, I can understand. And again, I would agree with a lot of what Jim said, special ed is not funded to what it needs to be. It's very costly to provide these services to students, but as part of a public education, it's important they receive the services. That's about all I have to say on that right now. That's definitely something I will look up and find out more for the future.
Yeah, Jim hit the nail on the head with that unfunded mandate for the special education is huge for us and even one or two percent increase would mean that we can fund, not reach into the general fund as much. And then we can look at other things on that, counselors, things like that for special ed purposes. And probably, I think what is being talked about right now are things to reestablish. We're having a teacher shortage because of some of the things that happened in the past and we can start looking at wages and benefits, things like that, to keep and attract our most important resource in the school district, which is the teachers.
Okay, so for our next question, we'll start with Deb, go to Tim, and then Jim. How should teacher performance be measured and what are some of the challenges inherent in evaluating teachers? How does the district balance evaluation for accountability and using it to help teachers improve?
I just thought of accountability of the question.
And using, and using the data to help teachers improve.
Okay. Having been in that situation, I realize that it's tricky to evaluate a teacher. They can be the best teacher in the world. A lot depends on the students. And, and as much as we talk about how to reach every student every day, it's easier said than done in some cases. I think, I know now that teachers set goals for themselves based on different parameters that either the district or the state has set out. And it's their progress towards meeting these goals that's important. So when the teacher sits and meets with their principal or evaluator, they have the discussion about how are you moving along to meet your goals? And that's what's important. I, I've seen numbers, you know, okay, I will have eighty percent of my students reading at the highest level for the grade or something. You, you can set that for a goal and it's good to set lofty goals, but at some point you need to realize that every day with students is reality and you do your best and you work toward the goal. So how, I think it's just going to be a discussion between the administrator and the teacher as to how are they performing on their appointed goal? Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Deb on that. I have a daughter who's a teacher and she lets me know all the time about the student, quality of the student. She's teaching in an affluent suburban school right now. It's a lot easier to teach than a more challenged, diverse school. So it does matter about the students that you get. So how do you objectively measure performance to, in that case? Well, I think exactly, you have to administer it with your principal, sit down and do some goal setting, both agree to, and set metrics to see that you can achieve those.
I think we're thinking incentive pay, right? That's kind of in the background, we talk about educator effectiveness. So I'd just like to comment on that. I do believe that if we were to pay significantly on incentive educators, that we'd probably lose our best minds within two or three years. Here's why I say that. All of, and I love incentive. All of my careers in the private sector, all of those companies, field sales reps were commonly paid heavy doses of incentive and they loved it. Because the harder they worked or effective they are, the more they get paid. Typically, this, this was industrial sales. So a sales rep would have a section of the city, maybe one's got southeast, one's got southwest, you have some section of the city. If you had a section that was growing, the business is doing well, as a field sales rep, you're going to do well. But if you're in an older section that's on the decline, you're in trouble. If you transferred a good sales rep from a good area to a weak area, he's gone. He's gone within a year, somebody will pick him up. And that's what is at risk with good educators because from one year to the next, to the third, their classes and therefore the ability of their kids to learn can change.
Okay, so for our next question, we'll start with Tim, go to Jim, and then Deb. How can the school district strengthen its partnership with parents and the community in order to have support for public education?
I think that goes back to the collaboration that I am a fan of. Collaboration includes not only teachers and parents, but the students and community resources when they're needed. We've got sixteen thousand kids in our district. I think that means we need sixteen thousand collaborations every year. I mentioned this in Rotary as a service group a couple of days ago, and one relative whom I respect said, Jim, you mean we need an IDP kind of document for every kid that defines who is collaborating and what responsibilities the parents have and what responsibility the teachers have in the community and just for this kid? I think she's right. I, I think if you want to build and support, you have to orchestrate the collaboration, you have to make it work. And at some point, I think we're going to need some sort of document that spells out who does what within that college.
Deb?
Thank you. Okay, strengthen the partnership between school and parents. I had some interesting conversations over the past couple of weeks as I've been going out door-to-door campaigning. And I think somehow, as I mentioned, just even being available, letting parents know your phone number, your email address, websites. The district does a great job of having a lot of information on their websites, I've referred to it often. But at some point, we need to talk with parents face-to-face and find out what's really going on, whether it's be going, going to the, what's going on in the parents' minds? If it's going to some of the PTA meetings and listening in on those, it can't just be the, the high-quality musicals. I think it needs to be some of the other groups where parents need to really get an idea from parents where, where they're feeling that there isn't the best communication and work towards that point.
Yeah, parental involvement is the best predictor of academic success, so we absolutely have to get the parents involved in all forms of child education. I agree with what's been, what's been said there with the communication. Interesting to note that I found this very interesting because the academic parent-teacher teams that are, we're piling here at Lincoln School, and it gets the parents to play games, learning games with, with children, reading and math with cards. So, the kids go home at night and play with their parents games on this and they learn words, they learn the multiplication tables, et cetera. I just think that's really a neat and innovative way to get the parental involvement. And it's always that communication, letting them know how important they are to the classroom and to the student's success.
Okay, so we're nearing the witching hour. I've got two questions left. So, this one, we will start with Deb and go to Jim and then Tim. And I'm going to expand this a little from what it was, as it was written. On the curriculum, how should ASD address the views of anti-science groups that oppose teaching climate change or evolution, for example? I'll expand that into whenever there is a special interest group that has their agenda and wants to influence the curriculum with it.
I'm thinking for a minute. I think we need to be careful about going down slippery slopes. I know that the state has academic standards and I, and this just makes me realize, I know that Appleton has been working to update their standards for some of the different subject areas. I think it's important that we really have a discussion as to what do we really want the students to learn? I, I'm just, I think it's getting to be the end of the hour. Boy, I'm just stuttering right now. I'm, I think we just really need to take a look at why these ideas are being presented. Are they based on research? Are they based on something that students really should be knowing or is it just a whim that someone's coming up with? As you said, a special interest group. We have to have some community input on that, I believe, for curriculum and also take a look at what best practices are in teaching certain subject areas.
Science was defined for me as classified knowledge, I think it was fifth grade. And that's a pretty broad category, but it has the word knowledge in there. It's the extent to which we think something is true. It's, there's been some hypothesis testing that's been done at some point, perhaps there's been peer review, perhaps a peer test run, but enough that scientists and engineers and others have concluded that we really think this is going on. So if, if that's the case with climate change, as I believe it is, we can not avoid it, right? Now, we do need to let our students have the freedom of thought and the freedom of perceptions and they have the right to believe something or not, that's their call and we should respect that. We shouldn't force them to think in a certain way, but we also shouldn't change the material because of personal preference. So maybe as an opt-out of a book, maybe as an opt-out of a course. But if you sign up for a course and that's what's being taught, then that's what's being taught and we're doing it because the district believes that it's true and I think, I think we need to stick with that. Because if we ever go in the direction of not respecting data, I think we go in the wrong direction.
Curriculums are basically dictated from the DPI. We have very professional administrators here in the Appleton School District that vet out curriculums, books, et cetera. I would not be in favor at all, I'd be adamant, if any special interest group tried to change that for whatever purpose they had in mind. It just doesn't work. It's not, if you, if you, adhered to that, it becomes propaganda of education, so I would absolutely not allow special interests in the classroom.
Okay, and so for our conclusion here, we'll start with Jim and then Deb and then Tim. And it really is your final opportunity to ask, to explain to us why we should support you as boarders, why should we support you for the school board?
You heard me speak about my kids. Daughter that does well, son that struggles. After all these years, they're grown now, of course, after all these years, I am still troubled, particularly with my son, because I wonder, did I do everything that I could have as a parent? And I'll bet everybody, parent of a troubled kid in this district is thinking that to one level or another. I believe that a very good answer is the four stakeholders, student, teacher, family, community, coming together. Just again, I'd like to see the schools lead that and I will support policies that help the schools build academic knowledge. And we can teach, study school skills at an early age, we can lower class sizes in grades one, two, three, we get that special ed funding increase, and continue to offer a variety of courses for middle schools and high schools. In the area of social skills, I think we need to continue to encourage kids to sign up for co-curriculars in art, music, theater, and sports because it's such a wonderful way to learn, to get to know other people and to learn teamwork. And then finally, the growing area of emotional health, which we are putting more and more resources in and I'm glad we are, we're teaching kids to handle stress, to handle anxiety and cope with life's challenges. I think those three areas are a very profitable direction for us to take.
Okay, why should you vote for me for school board? I have a passion for education, I have a passion for students. I can learn the numbers, I can learn the curriculum, I can learn the ropes, but I know education and I know students. I'm a quick learner, I work hard, I would get up to speed on whatever I need to study. I feel like I have a, just a good basic common sense of how to get along with people, how to work, share my views with them, but listen to what they have to say as well. The number of different meetings I've been attending over the past couple of months, I've gone to Democratic things, I've gone to Republican things, I just want to know different people's thoughts and be able to formulate my own opinion and be able to share that with the other members of the school board. I do agree, academic, social, emotional are all important parts of a student and just really want to work on the board, with the board, with the administrative team, teachers, students, to get what's best for the kids because they are our future. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, I am not a politician. I'm a business person, is, got a passion for public education. I think because of my background, I deal with a lot of small and medium-sized businesses, so organizationally, financially, I bring a different perspective than educators and others to the board. I, I think that perspective is a good perspective as it, I think those, the different ideas complement each other and we make better informed decisions. So, that's why I vote for me.
Thank you. And thank you again to all candidates for school board. We always want to be a part of this. So I need to also thank members of the League who helped make this happen. We've got Jeannie and Cindy and Linda and...